I'd like to call this meeting in the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer. Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Praise your allegiance.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total, one million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and two cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
No, Jim beat me. No, yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion has passed. Remarks of visitors.
None, sir.
Get right into bids. From the administration, we have Civic Plus Agenda.
Yes, sir. Mayor City Council, what you see here is the Agenda Meeting Management Program from Civic Plus, who's also our website provider. We had received pricing from them, which is in this year's budget. It was eighteen-seven ninety. They are running a fourth quarter discount, which means it's just fifteen thousand, eight seventy-five, and that covers implementation and our first year of service.
Any discussion?
Leah still has to read the ordinances off. Right? I don't want AI taking over, so we have to make that motion. That should be amended.
I will entertain a motion to approve the bid of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for Civic Plus.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yep.
Motion passes. We also have four oh six Main Street renovations.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, we've been working with Bacon Commercial Design to come up with a rehabilitation remodel plan, some recommendations which are attached here in order for him to prepare bid and construction documents. It would be a lump sum of nine thousand dollars. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollars bid, I should say, budgeted for the project.
Any discussion?
So that nine thousand come out of the hundred and forty thousand budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think this is just a great idea to keep building on the base of this thing. You know, we had a an asset down there that was deteriorating that we took care of and we you know, we took care of the back end, so everything is nice and steady on there now. We've worked, we're working with the the heating, the air conditioning, the roof and so on. So now we got a good solid base to work with and now we can start making decisions in the future as to what we're going to do with it. And I think it's an asset that is going to be useful, even though we don't really know exactly what it's going to be, how it's going to be used yet, but I think I think this is really a good step in the right direction.
I will entertain a motion to approve nine thousand dollars to Bacon Commercial Design for construction and bid documents.
So moved.
Exactly.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Splash pad and all-inclusive playground.
You want to do the video first?
I say let's roll it.
Okay. Michelle, share that screen. Here we go.
Well, the video.
Seems pretty awesome when it's all done. That's for sure. So tonight, attaching the agenda is a breakdown of both the splash pad and the all-inclusive playground. We had originally allocated one point five million. Tonight I am requesting an additional three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for some engineering for the floodplain development as well as some overages on to entirely complete the all-inclusive playground instead of doing it in a multi-phase process. So the three hundred and eighty would cover multi-engineering and the overage to finish the all-inclusive in one entire project as well as leave us just over eighty thousand in reserve for anything else that may come up during construction. Which I feel comfortable. It's a pretty good number to have there.
Is there any discussion?
Great. Can I insist? We use I N L. That's their specialty since it's a floodplain.
They're already doing it.
Thank you. And Jim said ten one time that he likes to see a whole project finished upfront. And I thought that was remarkable. He said, this does it. If, I mean, you don't need anymore. I'll never forget how Jim worded that. And I would like to see this completely done. Cut a ribbon, kids go play, and we smile, we drive by. Nothing needs to be done.
That's why I'm requesting this tonight.
Perfect.
Hey, Josh, one thing, when I was looking at the video there, I don't know if it's just not part of the video, but is there somewhere where the parents are sitting when all this is going on?
Yes. There's multiple sunshades that'll be around and then probably down the road, we probably incorporate a pavilion, rentable space out there on that field as well. So, but yes, there's all kinds of seating areas, covered sunshade areas for parents, kids, everybody.
Part of the increasing cost was to add benches and sunshades. So it, we initially looked at putting that in a second phase and it's like, let's just, let's just get it done.
Yeah.
Would we need to include engineering for a possible restroom in that area?
No, because we're, we're currently doing that to upgrade the one that's there now. So we'll bring that station up to something a little more commercial than what was originally installed that failed a few times now. So that'll should be, that'll all take care of, take place during
Yeah.
construction. So once everything is ready, bathrooms, turnkey, splash pad, all-inclusive playground, turnkey, ready to go for the public.
Good job. Good job.
Josh, do we need a pavilion?
I mean, I think down the road is something to look at. I don't know if we need it necessarily right at the beginning of it all. I would rather see everything developed first and figure out the perfect place for one instead of just, let's do a pavilion and not look at it once everything's reconstructed. I would just rather that be a down-the-road project. I'd rather just get, let's get the all-inclusive done and get the splash pad done. Get the sunshades up that are going to be incorporated into it, and then we'll come back and see what we can add later on with next year's budget.
So go by Mike Cook's intelligence coming down. You want to hold off until you get a better handle on how the, it all plays out. Because it's nothing to do with you penny pinching.
Nothing to do with penny pinching. I just.
You've done an excellent job of your budget.
Something in development that we don't know exactly how it's going to land yet to incorporate it all as one piece instead of just, you know, a splash pad and all-inclusive playground and then just some pavilion thrown up here. So.
Keep in mind, the complex pavilion is fifty feet away.
Yes, and that is rentable.
Well, I tell you, this is my opinion. If we are going to do this, let's do it right and do it like it looks and we will have the best playground and splash pad in the area. Making us number one, of course. Okay.
I, I got a question. As far as the complex, are we going to keep the name Butch Lucas Complex?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still going to, actually, the splash pad and ADA Playground are still going to be known as Butch Lucas Field.
Okay.
So the names that we picked for the splash pad, the Turtle Cove, is Turtle Cove at Butch Lucas Field. His name is not going anywhere from.
Okay, I've been hearing a lot of comments about it.
Field anymore. It's still Butch Lucas Field.
Okay.
So that is, that's not going anywhere.
That's good.
What about like the warranty on that splash pad? I mean, I'm, I'm sure whether they give you a year and then we're on our own.
Equipment's like five-year warranty, so.
What about all the concrete work, though?
Yeah, I'm sure that's probably going to be a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep in mind that on the splash pad, all that is a sealed surface, but then the playground, the all-inclusive playground, that's poured in place.
So it's like a rub, it's almost like a rubber floor. You see them, they're everywhere now. It's the new thing. Mulch is going away and it's pouring places coming to to take its place. So it's actually a recycled rubber material, super durable.
But the base in the splash pad is all going to be concrete, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We're just room finished.
I just worry about that stuff all cracking up and and then you're like, you know, like the old swimming pools where all the.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think you're going to have, you're not, you're not going to have the pressure that pool puts on concrete too. So this isn't going to hold water. It's going to drain.
Right.
So it's going to be more like a sidewalk, driveway, street more than it is a pool. You're not going to have pressure pushing down from water weight in a concrete bowl or vice versa coming up from the bottom. So with plain rock base, the concrete, I think we should be fine.
Okay.
So.
Okay, is there any other discussion? I'd like I would like to entertain a motion to spend the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to with a splash pad and the all-inclusive playground.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Public Works Salt Shed.
I'm just here for questions. I didn't bring anything with me to, to present this.
If you recall from the last meeting, the lump sum bid for the salt storage shed was three fifteen four, eight forty-five from Boyer Building and Design. We brought that back for council to consider here and Shane's here to answer any of your questions.
Shane, the impaction on that, do you think it's going to be an issue? With the fill and everything, but that comes with part of them putting it up, right?
I mean, it's all being engineered. There's
Right.
testing everything out there.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, your feeling on it, your gut feeling on it.
I think.
Uh, okay.
Being constructed, that was never part of the lagoon anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Or where it was untouched. It's basically virgin ground.
Oh, good, good. So should be any issue all day. Thanks, Shane.
You're welcome. So we'll be, have capacity to hold a barge of salt in both ends.
Intentions are to be able to order salt by a barge load so we can save some money. And if Herkey gets that port put in, we might even be able to truck it ourselves in the future, too.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid of three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for a salt storage shed by Boyer Building and Design Incorporated.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made in second and roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's have a salt shed. Get right into ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have Bill forty-seven ninety-six on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section three fifty-five, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specified places in the municipal code of the City of Festus, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety-six is now open for discussion. Stafford Board.
Certainly, as we discussed, we would propose council consider this ordinance for approval with the following amendment under paragraph two, sub-paragraph F, striking the language for purposes of loading and unloading only, but not to exceed seventy-two hours at any given time.
Is there any discussion? Is there anyone who'd like this bill to be carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven ninety-six for the second time in title only?
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven ninety-six for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending section three fifty-five, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited in specified places in the municipal code of the City of Festus, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins. Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety-six has passed. Next, we have Bill forty-seven ninety-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill?
Sure.
Push to talk, sorry. Was that, was there a motion to amend the ordinance?
No, we are, we're past it. So the, did we, yeah, I think we skipped that. I, I said in the staff report to amend it, but we would need council to approve the ordinance language amended.
If somebody.
Then the second.
So I'll make a motion to now revise, reconsider, let's strike the amendment and, or re, you say. That's why you make three or bucks higher.
Somebody could just make a motion to reconsider and then we could move to amend and then vote as amended.
There's my motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
And then a motion to approve as amended.
Yes, and Leah, are you clear on the amendment language?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, is my motion.
Motion has been made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Motion passes. Moving right along, we'll go into Bill forty-seven ninety-seven on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Boyer Building and Design, Inc. for the Water Department Salt Shed, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
I believe we've already had a discussion on this bill. Is there any council person that would like this carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven ninety-seven for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven ninety-seven for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Boyer Building and Design, Inc. for the Water Department Salt Shed, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety-seven has passed. Okay, under new business, Barry, you have something to do tonight? Yes. Well, we're going to let you do what you want to, your.
We have her on the.
Okay.
Luckily, I brought one in from my car, just in case. So what this is for is I belong to a professional education organization, P E O, or the, it's the initials.
Mary, could you step up to the podium, please?
Sorry about that.
Ken, so Ken can see here.
Sure. I can do that. I remember what I said. I planned it really well. No kidding. Do I have to press, is it on? Okay, I belong to a professional education organization for women. It's national, international, but we, our local chapter is E H. And there are hundreds of chapters all over and we work to support the community, but we do mainly education for women by giving scholarships. But we also like to do things for the community. We have a, provide essentials for others where we all bring things that maybe are not covered by food stamps and we give those to the food bank. We do that individually at our meetings. But we decided because it was firefighters' month that we wanted to do something for our firefighters. And so we so far have six children's blankets like this that we put together. And I wanted to present one of them and I had the other five in the car. And so they're all different. They're not all like this. But we want to donate those because we respect the work that our firefighters do. And we just wanted to do something and I thought it would be nice that the council would know that there are organizations that do support the city. And we're one of them. So chief, if you will come up here and just take one of these blankets and then I'll have to go out and get the other ones out of the car. But just the idea that we, we like to help the community. On community and school, that's what it's about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. And thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome, Mary.
Because I did call in and tried to.
I know. I know you did.
But that's all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, is there any old business?
No, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
Yeah, I'd like to start out by saying that we go through our park out there usually once a week and it literally looks, looks good out there and we, there's always a lot of people that goes through our park. So it's, it's really a big calling card for the city. And I think this splash pad is going to be, like the mayor said, it's going to knock it out. We're going to be at the top of it with that and glad to see that. So we can get that going. I think the sooner the better on that. And it's like for our fire department, appreciate all the training that you guys are going through and and keeping our city safe as far as that goes, as well as the fire, the police department. So and that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Weiner.
On, I guess my comments are basically around the parks and what a asset they are and what a good job is being done. The, the red barn is really starting to look sharp out there. We went walking, we were walking out there yesterday and it's, it's going to be another asset to the city that we, we don't know just how well it's going to be received yet, but I forecast it's going to be really, really well received. Pickleball courts are still busy, people out there playing this morning. The Lindhart Light Show, you know, lots of people coming in for that also. There's no UFOs in the sky with the, with the clouds lighting up, you know, that is the light show. So I think we're good. So that's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Dennis.
I've got to say, the initiative and the foresight and the preparation our departments had put into these projects is impressive. It is impressive getting the information together for seeing any issues. Job well done. It's all department heads. Uh job well done. It's all department heads. Uh I've got to echo the amount of training the fire department's been putting in. Uh very impressive, very impressive. They utilize that, that uh, that facility at the park on a regular basis. I like to ride out there and look every once in a while, uh doing a good job. Uh like I said, we're moving right along with our water, street projects. Uh we got it going on and thank you everyone for, that makes that happen. Uh happy first responders day to all the first responders and uh thank you everyone at all departments. From the office to the street, police, fire, uh you guys are doing a wonderful job. Thank you. You make our job very easy and we really appreciate you. That's all, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cook.
Uh thank you, sir. Um Brian said the Red Barn, I think it looks wonderful. Do you have a question on Mill Street, I think it is, in front of the train tracks and butcher shop? Trick or change, is that spiral work out there? Cause man, they are tearing that up and we're getting beat. What, do they give you a timeline? Do they give you a scope of work? What, what all is that detail?
We're supposed to get through there in a hurry, but Joker's told them that they aren't in, they, they gotta do West Main before they can get to the airport. They're not being pushed. Uh and they're doing things in sections now. They're going to fix, fixing their entire main and then doing all the service lines. And they're coming back fixing the road. They're just trying to do everything block by block by block. And that's close enough to.
Pro, just food for thought to think about. Is there?
They're closer.
Okay, so is there a way that could, this can be prevented in the future if they're gonna change midstream? Maybe they only need do sections at a time. I mean, they really, as we all know, tore it up pretty good and um I'm quite sure most of the council has had somebody in their ear over it. So just, thanks for being on top of it. Um Josh, in your report, it says you guys had a busy, busy season. I, I think the council has read it and agrees and uh please let everybody know at the Parks Department, all city employees, uh I think the council is very proud of our city staff and what a great asset is. And a question for you on the new asphalt walking trail at the park. I, I know there's cracks forming. Um will they be filled? Cause.
Three shot to Grant and he threw a peek at him. He thought they, when I explained to him what was going on. He was uh thinking it was gonna disperse some hairlines and then he came out, looked at it, he's like, okay, this is a problem. So kind of looking around, me and him walking, the whole ground out there is cracking. So there's probably some plastics or something going on in that clay out there. So uh he's going to come in and crack seal it and then do an entire sealed job of the entire walk.
Perfect. That, that's perfect. Cause I know when something's designed for twenty years, it doesn't mean you leave it alone for twenty years. Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilman Collier.
Okay, I've got a few things. Back in the early nineties, when I was first on the council, if somebody would have told me that we'd be paying over a million dollars in our warrants, I'd have thought that has been crazy. But that shows you the prosperity and the growth of our city. And uh that is due to a lot of the people moving this way and due to our facilities that we have. And our growth, we're gonna have to really look at uh our growth because that highway in the back, my backyard is starting to look more and more appealing to a lot of people to be coming down this way. So we're gonna have to really be ready. And another one, uh I know whenever we had some constructions, projects, the apartments up on uh American Legion Drive and the uh after-school daycare type thing on Collins and uh West Main. Have we been getting any complaints about traffic or anything in those areas? So they're, they're doing okay then? Okay, that's good. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
Kind of revisit what Mike was talking about on Mill, cause uh you know, it's my front yard. Literally my front yard. Uh and I noticed that since I said they were doing such a great job, they slowed down. But there's a, they've got the big, big sheets over or the big, you know, whatever pieces of metal over time. But there's a few smaller squares that just have rock and the rock is eroding out of them. If you could have them, please dump a little more and I can tell you they were working today because the uh jackhammer is not in my front yard right now. It's down the street. So it's moved. And besides that, I'll just uh, it's really nice to see that Festus is building facilities and venues so that our growing population is doing things here versus going everywhere else to do those things. And I think we have to be able to offer that to people that are wanting to move into the community. So great job by everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Vins.
I'd just like to echo what everybody said and the growth. I'm glad to see it keeps coming farther and farther to us. Really making Festus stand out. That's it, sir.
All right, thank you. Councilman Tenon.
Um, so Greg, I wanted to revisit the lights. Okay. Uh so, so if uh, if the solar lights are like thirteen grand a piece?
Well, one of them are. They're, they're, we may be able to find some.
Okay.
I mean, there's more than one vendor out there, so.
So what's it cost to, to get Amarin to, is it just a timing to run the cables and to uh set the lights? Because it doesn't seem like a uh too big issue to get street lights put in these subdivisions.
I think at the, you know, we got hung up forever on that Shapiro. I mean, and heck, the guy retired since then. Uh John Freel, who was our, our main contact, obviously there's someone there now, but um it, it, it seems that if we want to really move this along and do some infill areas where we have some concerns, um this might be a good option. Um the nice part about it is, once it's in from a solar perspective, but you probably get ten years out of one of those things. I don't know. Did you see any spec Shane? Five-year warranty. Yeah.
So you spec, the gentleman I talked to.
Right.
They were twenty-five years warranty.
Twenty-five year warranty. So that's, that's twenty-five years of us, us not paying Amarin every, every month.
Like the five to seven thousand dollar range, that's been two years ago. So you might as well make a product that ain't going to change since then, but.
Right.
Probably still a little bit for those.
Yeah, so I, I think we have some, I think it's worth exploring, right? I mean, if we, if we buy six to ten of them and we solve the Shapiro issue and the Hawk Point issue, maybe some other spots around town and it turns out we like it. Um uh then you don't have the infrastructure costs and you don't have the, the monthly maintenance that you pay. I mean, our our bill for our streetlights is that thick uh that we pay every month, uh which is fine. I mean, every community has that. We're not immune. We're not special, so.
The, what, what does a streetlight cost, PC? You know, as far as the electric, electric?
Oh, what's the monthly cost?
So.
Yeah.
So it would take a long time to uh pay for those uh solar lights, so.
True.
But, but I think, you know, like Hawk Point, we've looked into trying to get wires pushed through there and then there's no area to connect supposedly.
And, and that's the other issue. I mean, if you don't have, if the, you know, Shane knows this really well. If there's a transformer close by, they've got something they can tap into. If there's not one close by, it's the additional cost of having one of those set either on a pole or on the ground. So it, it can get expensive. It just kind of depends on the lay of the land, you know, logistically, how does everything look in that area?
Yeah. But do they make the solar ones that look similar to the?
They look just like them. Yeah, but you can pick any design. You pick a Cobra head out, pick a, a decorative acorn light and you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between the two.
Now, I think that's a good thing because I, I'm like Bobby. I've got people, especially on Hawk Point all the time, you know, because it's just so dark and they try to make that walking move.
Mm-hmm.
And uh um I probably hear about it every couple of weeks, right? And then uh the other question I have is uh oh gosh.
Ten seconds.
I know. Oh, yeah, I know what it is. Uh I, I want to say uh uh maybe with Stacy, a follow-up on that and also Mike. No, no, no. And uh we are like, our sales are mostly uh anymore uh out of town people coming into Festus.
Mm-hmm.
We do, we do have a few that just move around, but um it, I think it's gonna be a, a a problem soon because of all the sales and houses. And uh the infrastructure as far as highways are just getting just really crowded. And I don't see it slowing down for anything. So that's, you know, that's just my take. So I got.
All right, sir. Thank you. Well, I'll agree with what everybody has, has said about businesses and people coming down here to Festus. And uh I'm just amazed at how much progress that we're, we're making. And at some point in time, we're going to have to annex some land. I don't know where, I don't know how.
I do.
Greg knows where. And that's right. And it, it is gonna be a little bit easier because we won't have to put sewers in.
That's true.
And uh I understand that Councilman Weiner is a pickleball champion for his age group. I saw that somewhere. I can't remember where I saw it, whether it was in the paper or on Facebook, but congratulations to you. And um now there's something else I want to talk about, but I'm kind of like Jim, give me ten seconds. That's right, because, because of my age, I get that, I get some extra time.
Can I, just one thing real quick. The, the video that uh Josh showed tonight, uh which is the fly-through, that is all the colors that will be, uh so that's authentic. That's what that's gonna look like. Uh as soon as this meeting is over, uh that is going on to the city's YouTube channel, all of our social media platforms on our website so that we can let the public also get a sneak preview of, of Turtle Cove at Lucas Field at Kreitz Park.
At Charlie. No idea.
But uh, you know, I think things are going well and, and you all are a pleasure of a council to work with. And because we're all on the same page, we want the same things. And uh so anyway, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.